This conference will now be recorded.
The time being 4:45 PM, I'd like to call the meeting of November 17th, 2022 to order. Our first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I just got to spin around.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know I turned that way.
Our next order of business is to review and approve minutes of 11:03.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of Thursday, November 3rd, as presented.
Second. Motion and second discussion.
It was, um, I didn't double check, I saw it earlier, but on the roofing contractors on page five of eight, second, let's see, under selectmen's reports, begins with roofing contractors. So it was Jasmo was 18,850, and then, um, selectman Ruggles made a motion to go for 15,850. Is that it?
Oh, yeah, obviously there's a typo.
There's a typo.
Yeah, just a typo, yes, one of them. I don't, I didn't check into it.
I thought it was 15.
I thought it was 15.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I also believe Jasmo is spelled with an, with no E.
You're correct.
The only thing that I had was on page one of eight on the bottom, where Constantine asked for clarification of the parking spaces provided for IMC at 243 Main Street location, and if there was a conditional approval, I just thought it needed more explanation there because if, we were talking about, in the sentence above, we were talking about, um, the 2006, where there was a motion and to give up the, to motion the spaces to the, uh, the previous owner, and then we went right into talking of, somebody brought up the spaces about, uh, well, he owns the property, I think Steve brought it up, that where he owns the property next door now, there's plenty of parking spots, and then that's when I said, I think we need to ask for clarification if they went to the planning board to see if those parking spaces, uh, were allocated to that building or not. I bet I don't know how you would word it, and I didn't go back on the, on the video to, to see exactly how it was worded, but this sentence technically is correct, but it just needs, uh, before and after, if we're gonna put that sentence in there. Um, it needs to go with the other building if, if they're technically with that other building. Think of somebody six months from now going to read this, they're not gonna know what we're talking about. Maybe just add the word designated, I think that's what we, we, um, were talking about prior to asking for clarification, were those parking spaces designated to that particular building?
So it would read, ask for clarification of the designated parking spaces?
Provided for IMC at their 243 Main Street location.
And strike the rest, or just keep the?
No, just keep the, that's fine. Yep, that's perfectly fine. Everything else is fine for me.
Alright, I withdraw my motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from November 3rd, 2022, as amended and corrected.
Second.
Motion and a second. Have a discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up this evening is Mr. Pearson, Finance and IT, to enter the discussion on the budget.
Good evening. So in your, uh, in your binders, you'll find an updated budget form, and I will go on the record tonight as saying, I'm going to be extremely brief, because I had planned on discussing a number of things particularly related to the tax rate, and unfortunately, the tax rate's been delayed. At first, we were waiting for the fire district to have their special meeting on the 12th. That was completed, the commissioner signed what needed to be signed and submitted the DRA. But in the interim, while the school district had submitted their paperwork to DRA by the end of October, um, there's a process by which it has to be certified through the Department of Education, because it's a cooperative school district, and for the apportionment and all that. In any event, uh, and with new personnel, both the school district and also at the, at DOE in this, in this area, um, it got kicked back, it was resubmitted, there've been a few revisions, but we're waiting on DOE, um, the Department of Education to be able to certify this, and then the apportionment still has to go through another, um, less intensive process, but, uh, we're, the three towns are really at a standstill right now, and as you know, we borrowed, um, considerably recently to make it through this month, and, uh, it seems as though DRA, uh, feels fairly confident that we should have the ability to set a rate, if not, uh, hopefully by early next week, and I'm interpreting that as Monday, Tuesday, um, because otherwise, it takes about two days to get the tax bills out for our town clerk tax collector, and, um, and there's a lot that has to go on with that. The warrant also has to be done, you have to sign the warrant, it has to get to the town clerk tax collector, you know, you know the, the process, but in any event, uh, we're right up against the wall because, uh, the bills would have to be mailed on the 29th, be due by the end of December without going into the new year, so, um, so it's, uh, it's gonna be tough, um, but.
So if they're mailed on the 29th, or some get them, you know, the 29th, some day, get them three or four days later, you're expecting the?
It's, it's because the tax collector will, um, put the due date on the invoice, and it can't be due any less than 30 days, so it'll, it'll have to be at the minimum due date. And I've talked to her about it, and, and, uh, it's a tight window, but we think we can, we can make that one down, as long as DOE and DRA come through. So what that's gonna mean unfortunately, uh, is probably a, um, some type of special meeting for you. Ordinarily, I would, if I had a good feeling on the numbers for the school, I would give you some parameters and, and ask for permission to be able to set that with DRA, but I really, considering the, the changes this last year and how much it was reduced, and anticipating that's gonna be somewhat offset by some fund balance this year by the school, but that's being returned to the towns, but, um, just not having the clarity or confidence in it at this point, uh, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that, but I can tell you, we have, we will have a significant, um, amount to work with to, um, adjust the tax rate, so that's good. Uh, we're still looking at somewhere between a $400,000 and $500,000, um, you know, monies left over at the end of the year, providing, you know, no unforeseen, yes?
I'll call right now, 8:70. Just Dickie and I that are on, so. Yep.
Oh, no, no problem. Um, so in any event, uh, you, you know, our, our tax rate last year was 1853, which is the lowest it's been, I think, in probably eight years or so. Um, in terms of the rate itself, the, um, the towns portion was 599, uh, you know, we're, the, the town portion is not gonna be the issue for us. It's, it's really gonna be the school, that's the big one, uh, that I just don't know how that's gonna affect us, but in any event, we have a significant balance that I'm projecting we'll have left over at the end of the year, plus we have, uh, the unassigned fund balance, which is actually where those monies will be drawn from to use, uh, to buy down the tax rate, uh, once we know what we're dealing with, and then, uh, those monies left over at the end of the year will replenish, um, the unassigned fund balance. So, um, in any event, um, having said all that, the, um, the other aspect of the end of year is looking at the encumbrances. So we've really got to make sure with, with just, uh, two more, or two more meetings to go after this meeting, not including tax rate setting, uh, that, you know, we look to encumber, say, money for the chimney, the roof, and when the chief has an opportunity to talk to you about IMC Mobile and also the gun sites, um, that decisions are made on those things. So as it relates to the budget itself, and it is, it's in your binder, uh, there've been very few changes to it. Um, there were some personnel changes, it increased by $15,951, so just under $16,000, and we're now looking in terms of an apples-to-apples comparison to last year, not including the encumbrances of a 2% increase, a $107,000 increase year-over-year. Um, selectman Jasmine had asked, uh, last week about, you know, where there might be opportunities in the budget to, to hold things, that we always have money left over at the end of the year, and he's correct, and, uh, as you may recall, I replied that it's often because we have personnel changes, and when you have somebody leave, it takes some time to replace someone, um, or, uh, we weren't able to hire for whatever reason. So availability is usually the, uh, the cause of that. So, uh, just so that you know, right now, in this budget, there are five open positions, three at the PD and two in public works. The two public works positions, fully loaded, all costs included, are, are the value of $128,000, and the three PD positions are $305,000 in total. So the, the public works are, uh, crew's wages, and the PD, it's lieutenant, uh, lieutenant detective and patrol. And, uh, I did, uh, talk to the chief, um, to see if he had any interest in reducing one, one position, and it, and it would seem that if it were gonna be one of those, it would most likely be the detective. So that'd be about $90,000 out of that 305. Uh, I don't know that he's in favor of doing that, but you asked the question, uh, that would be my answer. So outside.
Because invariably, we always have money left over. I know, we have to budget for a full load, but are we gonna end up with?
Well, this, this year, it was really extraordinary. Uh, I can tell you, there have been a few years where we have squeaked by, uh, with about $28,000 being added to fund balance, and that, that, uh, when it's that tight, it causes me a lot of concern at the end of the year, but, um, but, you know, we, we really, uh, I think have a good handle on budgeting, it's, it's the uncontrollable, the unexpected, you know, it's those things that just crop up, something breaks, it has to be fixed, uh, and money has to be found. You know, those are the things that, uh, often, for Mike you mentioned, but keeping in mind that a good 64% of this budget is personnel and personnel-related costs. So, you know, if you're looking to, um, to reduce somewhere, that's, you know, it's, it's a lot easier not to hire than to hire and let go, so. So in any case, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Other than that, uh, there, um, there are just, um, a few unresolved issues in here. I did mention some of the, um, some of the proposed encumbrances, uh, IMC Mobile, and I believe I mentioned to the board in prior meetings that the maintenance for IMC Mobile is in the IT budget, uh, but that would be, uh, so we could reduce that by about $1,350 if the board does not opt to purchase IMC Mobile this year and pay for it this year.
That's what the maintenance is each year.
$1,350, that's correct, and generally, it goes up each year.
One year.
One year is $1,350, that's right. The, um, um, the other thing that's somewhat unresolved, if you recall, on October 28th, we had a meeting, uh, with Casella Waste Systems, uh, to discuss some of the concerns the board had with the agreement, and, um, and the board voiced, um, concerns about some of the, the economic risk that the town was gonna have to take on versus what, uh, the board perceived Casella was, was owning in that particular agreement. So, uh, so as you know, that, uh, both Jeannie and I have spent, uh, actually, a pretty considerable amount of time working on this, and, um, and it has not been a, a smooth, um, path. Uh, we, uh, we actually ended up, um, in completely an opposite direction from, uh, our original meeting on the 28th, and, uh, and since then, uh, we've been able to, to work out some things, but it's just, it's just been a, uh, a concerning process, and I will be speaking to you about it in non-public, and I have a packet in each of your binders, uh, on that, outlining, uh, the process and where we are. So I, I just mentioned that because, um, in, in my view, that's, uh, that's something that still has to be looked at and finished, um, one way or the other. So, um, would you agree? So, other than that, um, uh, one last thing to point out to you, unless you want to go through any specifics in here, are two last things. Uh, there are some grants, uh, that I've become aware of, one for cybersecurity, that, um, that is, I don't believe it's available yet, but it, it should be coming through the state, it's a federal grant, and, uh, when it does make itself available, I'd like, uh, permission to, uh, apply for any funds available to us through the state, but 80% of the monies that the state will be receiving for cybersecurity have to be distributed to the local governments, so, and, and I can tell you that the need is great, and, uh, and it is a, uh, it's constantly, uh, swimming upstream, um, trying to defend against things like, you know, the, uh, hacking and, and phishing and all that. We get alerts each and every day, so, um.
I would say yes.
Yep.
Great. And then, uh, just to let you know also that yesterday, the Franklin Savings Bank, um, loan committee met and they approved, um, the TAN for, um, a 60-day close. That means we need to close on the 2023 TAN by, uh, January 15th, and I've, uh, asked Jeannie that if we couldn't do that on the 5th, uh, which is your first, uh, meeting in '23. We can't do it in '22 because we will still be operating under our current TAN, and hopefully, we'll have it paid by the end of the year, and I have great confidence that we will. Uh, outside of that, um, uh, very little, yes? Uh, we currently owe 2.2 million.
2.2 million?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, uh, it's, uh.
I'm scared by that number.
Well, I can, I can, I can tell you that privately, I have, um, I have mapped out our cash flow through the end of the year, and, uh, it just all depends on when these tax bills go out. The later they go out, the higher risk we have, and the, the more I'm gonna have to push, uh, payments out, and, uh, and it's some of the big payments, so there is an outside possibility that, um, uh, depending upon how the tax bills look, I mean, you know, we, we could, uh, well, there are many options, but, uh, there's one that may require the board to, uh, sign a letter, request an extension on, on a particular payment. Outside of that, um, you know, I've worked out everything I can on my end. Uh, I really don't think we're gonna run out of money, but I've never been, I've never felt in this situation where we are right up against the wall, uh, in so many respects. The good news is that our, our, uh, once the tax bills go out, we have historically had a very good, um, good return and early return, so we, uh, typically pick up about, uh, 15% in the first week, and, uh, and it mushrooms from there. The, it's the big tax, uh, agencies that, that do the escrow accounts that really, uh, provide a, a great deal of liquidity to the town, so once those come in, and that's something the tax collector can work on, um, you know, accelerating hopefully, once those come in, we'll be in fine shape, so. Does anyone have any particular question? Has anyone, uh, had a chance to really go through the budget in detail?
The last one.
And this is, this is essentially, gonna look very similar, aside from. Yeah, this, uh, as I said, is less than $16,000 difference, and that's because of, uh, personnel changes. Um, so, uh, very little change overall.
Another concern I have was legal.
Uh, that you feel as though it's too low, or?
Judging from the bills that we already have?
Well, and, uh, you know, this is, um, let's see, where are we here? Yeah, um. I mean, that could be, um, you know, we're not going into.
This entails assessments too, right?
It does, but we have not been in a revow, uh, year, that'll be '24, so that's when we would really, uh, increase, probably increase that line. Um, there are some, some resolved issues, uh, would you not say? Things that have been resolved, that were, were requiring legal services earlier in the year.
But if 18,000 is all we used, uh, shouldn't have any big expense, should we?
But my concern is that we've spent 18,000, it's November, we still have some bills coming in, for, for services already rendered, so you're probably gonna go over, a little bit over the 20,000, and you're requesting the 20,000 for next year if you just, that's just general, that's without any of the assessments or anything like that, that's just generally, every day, here we go.
The, uh, and I think we reduced also in the PD, uh, the legal line there, legal expense was reduced 1,500 to, $1,500.
I didn't have an issue with that, I just felt that the, uh, that one.
We can always move money to that line, we always have money from somewhere.
Yeah, that's true.
That's correct. And, you know, it's just difficult to know, I mean, the, the only thing you can really look at is, uh, your existing, like, um, ser, legal services and cases that are, that are ongoing, and, and just sort of hope for the best, but, um, other than that, um, there really is not a lot new in here. I would just say also that I did share with the board, uh, a folder, um, that contains scans of the outside agencies, the ones that I have, and, um, and if, uh, if there are some I'm missing, I'm happy to scan those and put those there, because I hate paper, as you know. So, yeah. Right, the, the, um, the cap one is, uh, really big, I'm just warning you, it's probably a good 70 to 90 pages, uh, long, so. There's a lot of documentation there.
Light reading.
Light reading, that's right, and I will be back, uh, later to speak with you in non-public, um, about a, a contract issue. On that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
What's the guest's wifi?
Uh, it's Town Hall, lowercase, altogether.
I have a crisis for the words, I'm trying to multitask.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. So technically, the next piece on our agenda would be the swearing-in ceremony of our new sergeant, but considering, Mr. Pearson was so brief and succinct with his comments, I would, um, I think we could, yeah, we could do either the town administrator's report, or we can do the selectmen's reports. It's a wash, isn't it?
I would vote for the Gina Forrest through the head.
She always takes the last.
Yeah, so we will do, uh, let's, I, it sounds like a consensus, because at least three of us. So town administrators' report, so.
Hey, so you all received a copy of my report. I do have, uh, a couple late items that I batted on that you won't see on, on the report, because they just, just happened, so, I'll bring those to your attention. The first item, you have several action items, the first is the, uh, the adoption agreement for you to sign, we talked about this at the last meeting, this was increasing the, uh, salary reduction contribution from 2850 to 3,054 employees, uh, for the FSA, and, um, the board voted to increase that, so you just need to sign the adoption agreement. Should be in the to-be-signed file. The other item, and I'll just go through, and if you have questions, you can slap me. Um, the other item is, new item, is the Health Trust Cobra Retirement Rates Plan Design, which just came in, you sign this every year, it's, it's just a kind of standard document. Uh, it only has one signature, and typically, the chair signs it, so this is the, just, um, the HRA Cobra Retirement Rates, so it's a standard document sign, so. If you're okay with it, um, we just need somebody to have one person sign it.
You need a motion to that fact? Make a motion that the chair sign the Health Trust Cobra Retirement Form?
Jasmine's second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Great, thank you. The third item, or the next item on the action list is the 2022 Preliminary Assessment to Sales Ratio Study. That was in your, uh, to-be-signed folders, the pink certification form. Once you sign that, I will send that to Lauren, and she will submit it to DRA. Next item, Twin Rivers Cleaning Services Contract, so, um, if you recall, the contract came back and was significantly more expensive. We went back to them and said, and, and we had this conversation about what does the board want to do, how they want to move forward, so they did come back with a reduced amount. Uh, it's a 15% increase, and we, uh, we, um, asked them to put it on a, um, month-to-month, so that we could see, because basically, how they got to the reduction was actually reducing services, um, for cleaning services, so in Town Hall, I think they were, were doing it twice a week, and now they're doing it once a week. Um, and that gives us the opportunity, one, to see if we're okay. And that gives us the opportunity, one, to see if we're okay with those services, if we want to change anything, and the discussion that we had about, you know, do we want to do this in-house? And that's something I'll be asking about, is I do have a draft of a job description, not a job description, but the ad for the, if, if that's the way we want to go. So, if you're okay with this contract, I'd ask you to sign it, and we'll send it back again, it's month-to-month, if you get out of it, if we're not happy, or if we choose to go another way.
I make yes.
I make yes.
I make yes, too, I already signed.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. The next item, I had sent you all an email on the 14th regarding this order to raise and remove a certain property in Tilton, along with two ports for demolition contractors. It is in your packet, and I believe I forwarded it to you, and you just need to decide which contractor you want to use so we can get the process started, because we have been, the court has authorized that. Now, if you want to have more discussion, we can do that in non-public, if you have questions or want to talk about more about...
I couldn't make a decision because I was unclear of, and it was me because I don't know about this. I, I, this is completely foreign to me, so I didn't know whether the second proposal on the opposite page is the same as the first with asbestos abatement.
Those are just estimates, that's not a firm thing about the asbestos.
That was my other question.
Right.
Correct.
And it was, it was a challenge to get the two. Diane had gone out to several places, and those were the, the two that we got back, and we're not even sure, which is why I urge us to make a decision, because we're not even sure how soon these, whoever we choose will get started on this. Meanwhile, the building is, I understand, falling a bit more.
It is, yeah.
Who does the asbestos inspection to determine the amounts of asbestos that need be dealt with?
We'll leave that up to the demolition contractors, that's their job, it's not ours.
Well, they must have a licensed guy that they go through.
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of where I was reading, that's what it was, the cost of it.
Yeah, and my reading of it, the, the first one, the one on the front page, they will, to me, they would do the samples and the abatement, that's the way that I read it. On the second one, that's not the case, with the exception of the, the additional cost that's listed up on there, in terms of performing the asbestos survey of accessible and safe areas as required for demolition purchases, but it does not say in there the, the abatement. There's abatement in the first contract, the wording thing.
Okay.
So, so I, to me, I would lean with the first one, the front page.
Oh, yeah.
And you're okay talking, just not the specific property.
Correct, correct, yeah. We're, we're talking in general about the contract.
Right, no, I was just saying, it's okay.
If I was going to hire a guy. And this one, this second one does have the asbestos survey involved.
It doesn't say removal.
But it doesn't say removal.
Or abatement.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, because in the, in the other one, if you look on that last line before the, the estimate cost, it says asbestos abatement if any demolition of house removal to any approved land.
And it says price does not include asbestos testing and/or removal of any ACM, see below. So that's where I got confused on.
Yeah.
So. I'll go with the first one.
I'll make a motion to accept the, to accept the proposal from Always Wrecking for $25,000. Motion and second. Discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Welfare guidelines follow. I just want to follow up with the board to see if they're ready to approve the updated guidelines, if you all had a chance to look at them. My recollection is, I'll probably left it, is that if you had questions, you would reach out to the welfare administrator, get those answered. We started having a conversation, and Selena Constantino was in the room, and the rest of the board said we wanted to table it, so she got in the room, and then it never came back up again. So...
I make a motion, we approve the welfare guidelines prepared by Heather Thibodeau.
Ruggles, second. Motion and second, discussion.
I've had conversations with her about the questions that I had, and so, and that's pretty clear.
I looked it over, it was clear and well.
She's good at what she does.
Yeah, well-written.
So here, no discussion. All those in favor of the motion to accept the welfare, what was it?
New welfare guidelines.
The welfare guidelines, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, lamppost spaces. If you bend down near the, the site, you'll see that the trench has been dug, with the caps are put on while we're waiting for the lamppost. Our hope was that the lamppost would be here in time for Christmas, they're not going to be. And when we were out there looking at the site, if you've been out there, you know it's not mumbled, and I asked Kevin, I said, what would it take to get it more level and to take care of the curbing, and he said, no curbing. So, that's what we would like to see, is the board authorizing this additional amount to put in the new curbing and mumble it all.
Would we have to purchase curbing, or do we already own curbing?
That's, that's where the...
How it works.
That's where the number comes from, is Kevin went out and got that quote, and I said, well, it's over $1,500, so we need two more quotes, and the place that he got the quote from is the owner's supplier in New Hampshire. If you want two more quotes, he'll, he'll need to go to Massachusetts. He would buy this now before the end of the year and store it, when he's ready to install it. If this is what you want to do, otherwise, he can go out and get the quotes from Massachusetts.
And rather give it to them.
Yeah, I'd rather keep it in state, keep the money in state.
Okay, so is that consensus?
Consensus.
Yes.
And one other thing I'd like to mention, so Josh Carter called the other day to let me know that the lampposts weren't going to be here, but he offered to do temporary service to each one of the five sites so that we could put, if we wanted to, a tree or something at each site and light it up for Christmas. He would do that at no cost to the town, he would donate those services to...
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Do we have to, motion to accept that, just like we would any other donation?
Well, I'll have to get the value of that.
The value of that.
Okay.
That's fantastic. We have...
But that's great, let's go ahead and do that. Do we need donations for trees?
I'd like to get, so, you know, kind of had discussions about that, whether they should be, I talked to Kevin about it, there's, with the sonnet tube, there's enough of the space that you can drop the tree down, and it can be secured, because you don't want guy wires hanging up, they're wanting just to stand on its own. You know, whether it should be five artificial trees that, that are already lighted in the tourism year after year, not necessarily there, but other places, if that's what we want to do, or real trees. So, the next step, you would be, you know, pricing to see what we could get. To see if we could get Detective Lauren to find somebody who wants to do that.
You've read my mind.
Go forward.
She might be listening right now.
Well, actually, she, she's in training most of the time.
Oh, that's right.
But I think she's probably going to be here tonight for this one, so you can all gang up on it. The next item was, you all received an email from the town park tax collector regarding the year-old refunds that are due to residents, and the assessor, our assessor discovered this and suggested that interest should be applied because how old these refunds are, it's typically, it's like a month or two, it's not a year old. And I talked with Tim about it, and he had, like, possibly, he had a different opinion, and I felt like this was an unusual circumstance. In one case, it's $1,000, in two other cases, the people have sold the property, and if you saw the list, you'll know that there is one individual that you don't know. So, I think Tim was worried that it would set a precedent. I did talk to the, the assessor about it, and she said she didn't believe that that was the case, that this is, was a very unusual situation.
Well, so, just, just to explain from my vantage point, is that we often get overpayments, and so you would, you'd have to have a threshold by which you would pay interest on money being refunded. It happens regularly during tax season, and sometimes 30, 60 days after. So there's, there would have to be some sort of threshold, but I would say, if someone, I, I was thinking, if someone still maintained a parcel in town, that it's also a responsibility on the part of the taxpayer to, to have some, some knowledge of what taxes they're paying and what they have paid, what is due, and that sort of thing. So, that if you were going to pay interest on something over, say, nine months old or six months old, that it would be on those, those items that are no longer owned by a current property owner. If that makes sense.
Right, and the argument from the assessor was, it was a mistake.
Yes, it was.
Not, not made by the taxpayer.
That's correct.
So, anyway, I, I was not comfortable, I didn't, I wasn't comfortable making that decision. I thought the board would have needed to make that decision, whether they want to pay interest or not. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money, but...
Did you recommend if we did pay interest, how much interest?
Yeah, you have to, the statutory amount, which is 6%. There's no, you don't have any way. You don't, you don't have any way, you have to...
6%?
Six.
Okay.
Well, it was, it was a mistake on our part, but, yeah, I think it would be a mistake not to pay the interest.
Somewhere, somewhere, right?
What?
A mistake on...
No, there were.
It was all, it was all a mistake, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. But it wasn't the taxpayers' mistake, I see, I know, I know as much about my taxes as anybody.
Bless you.
I wouldn't necessarily know my tax bill was wrong.
Well, so...
I would just pay it.
Right, so the, the, the issue is that they could, it could be applied to a tax bill as well, if someone's still a current property owner, that's why I was thinking that one, but...
Well, I didn't hear that come out.
Well, the, the, that's why I was saying, for someone that no longer owns a property in town, but my concern, more than anything, is what's, what's the threshold by which you do pay interest or you don't pay interest? You know, when it's a refund, because there are times when there is, you know, someone, someone is double-paid, and it might take, you know, the tax collector might not see it right away, it could be 30 days later that, you know, something is refunded.
See, now, I would say 30 days, because most do, most people run on 30, 60, 90.
Tim, what have we done in the past?
We've never had a situation like this.
Well, I know it hasn't happened for this amount of time, but for overpayments...
We haven't paid, we don't pay interest on overpayments.
Have we ever put it back into the taxpayer's bill, applied it to the next door?
Yes, but it, in this case, it was a, there was a timing issue, I guess, so that she was not able to do that.
I get it.
And plus, some of the properties were no longer owned by the person needing to get a refund, didn't own a property no longer.
You get it.
I've paid bills twice, and they'd send me back the money, or they credit my account, they don't give me any interest. I've never done the interest thing, you know, if I overpay or by accident of theirs or none, they just say, oh, they don't give me credit. The only thing, you know, deposits on stuff, they give you interest on deposits, but overpayments, I've never seen it on anything.
So how much money are we talking about interest, now?
Oh, under $100.
But you set a precedent.
Well, and that's why, if you do decide to pay the interest, I think it's really important to have a threshold, so maybe like a 90-day or 120-day or something.
Yeah.
It's got to be out there, though, 60 days, it's entirely possible with, if you get escrow companies paying, homeowners paying, it gets double-paid, it could take a while to sort that out.
You could get a commercial property owner that gives us $10,000, and they would pay 6% interest on that, if you start, start precedent.
Can we as selectmen set that threshold?
Yeah.
We can.
And it could be, I don't know, like, nine months, six months, a year?
I like 120 days. Firstly, I mean, that's longer than most people run their credit and debt and payments and what have you.
Well, you think about the bank and escrow, just for them, it takes them a month just to reply to some, some of the inquiries that you personally, I speak from personal experience, you know, hello, the taxes are going up, what, what, you know, and then they, it takes them three weeks to get back to you. So, 120 days, I would say, would be reasonable.
Four months, right? Yeah, that'd give you enough time, it would give me enough time. I don't think it's unreasonable. But in this particular case, I would pay the whole thing, without precedent.
They're, yeah, they're all over four months.
Yeah, yeah.
And she has the process down, if, if, I don't think, you know, we won't sue the staff again, so.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I think it'd be highly unlikely, it's just a, not one.
So, motion, Joel?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That motion is for the 120 days.
Motion for the 120 days.
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So, 120 days.
So, just for application, we accept that, that limit, but do you want to pay the interest on this?
Yes, without precedent.
So, is that a...
Without precedent.
I say yes.
Yes.
Motion, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Next, two items are new. I became aware of a T-Mobile grant for small towns, $50,000 for community development projects. I would like to apply for that. I don't, I have to read a little bit more and think about the project initially, what I'm thinking based on this morning, so we had an economic development roundtable with businesses, and we've talked about this before, is doing something with the riverfront and doing some kind of a plan or study for the area over by T-Hop that we have to...
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what I'd like to do.
You need an official vote, or just a yes?
Yes, please.
Official vote?
Yes, please.
Motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would make an official motion to allow Jimmy to go forth and pursue grants.
Absolutely.
For this, for these projects.
Ready.
Motion and a second, discussion. Yes, I'd like to see it, because of the amount of money I've given T-Mobile over the years, I'd like to see it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's my discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go get it.
Thank you. And one other grant that I became aware of, it's just came out, the USCPA grant, has a grant for solid waste management. Minimum grant award is five hundred thousand, maximum is four million. Eligible activities, I think, fall right into what we are trying to do at our transfer station. It's materials and waste streams within the scope of this program include municipal solid waste, including plastics, organics, paper, metal, glass, and construction demolition material. So it also includes management pathways of source reduction, reduce sending materials to material recovery facilities, composting, and industrial uses. So there are a lot of different opportunities for us to upgrade the transfer station and to move towards every segment.
That's my dream. I make a motion to allow Jimmy to pursue any and all grants concerning waste management.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
And I will, I've already talked to Kevin about it and Tim. So I think the three of us will work on that. And Joe, since this is.
This is my pet. And we have a goodly plot of land at the transfer station. That whole back thing, Kevin's already studied developing and leveling and doing things. So yay.
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 Good. I have a lot of FYI items. Don't know if you've looked at those. And if you have any questions, specifically you, John, because there are a couple items.
See FYI, hold it down there.
No, it's in my.
Oh.
So I don't know.
The top bullet point.
Yeah, I contacted.
Specifically.
Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, yeah, I was.
So I just wanted you to know that if it didn't come up, they are gonna remove guy wires.
They replace that pole.
They didn't talk about, yeah, they didn't talk about that. They are gonna remove them.
They're hanging really low. Probably deep right over. I figured out.
Oh, no, they're gonna rewire it, but the way they described it to me is it's gonna, it's gonna come down on a metal pole and then down into the ground. So, you know, if the walkway, it's gonna be like that and like that. And that's how it's gonna be.
The rector said.
And then the other thing is Home Energy will be putting on the plastic house.
Can you check and see if they have the brown ones instead of the white? It matches the brand. Just.
And unless you have any questions.
The third bullet from the bottom, are we gonna do anything?
I would love to, I would love, I mean, it's really up to you, but at the very least, I think that is pretty significant to put an ad in the paper. I mean, how we do it in Mera is we say, congratulations, thank you for your services.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of trying to get it on the front page.
I would work to get that done.
I think that's great, yeah, that's wonderful.
Sounds like a great idea.
Wonderful, yeah. They'll appreciate it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Better than a plaque.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
I will say the painting on the barricade, what barricade? I have a bridge, okay. And thank you very much to Tilton School students and Walmart employees who are helping us by planting bulbs. Help beautify Tilton, thank you very much.
We'll see the efforts of their labor in March April.
Yes. I know. Last spring was beautiful over there.
It should be better because of the films and the spots for it.
We need to make a decision.
Yep. The chief is not gonna be able to be able to return.
The situation is gonna be a lot lengthier than it's very involved.
I don't know. Well, do you not want to do it? I mean, he starts on Monday, so it's kind of.
Do you want to do it without the chief?
I think so, I think. And then if they want to do picture opportunities.
Yeah, I would text him back and tell him we're gonna proceed. Let him know.
Okay.
So we could do it with.
Okay. I'll let Abe know that we're gonna do that, so we can do it, so we can.
He wants to go ahead and.
Well, I hope so. But I know we'd like to be here too. Who is it?
Hi.
You know, I've never seen you in regular clothes. I didn't realize it was you until all of a sudden, like, wait a minute. I love it when the residents come.
If it's okay with the board over the next, we've got a few minutes, I could fill in with just a couple of sort of townwide announcements.
Coming where the tax files are.
No, yeah, go ahead. So a couple of things to note with a couple of service agencies in town. The Tilton Northfield Fire and EMS is doing their service celebration and holiday get together Wednesday, December fourteenth at five PM at the Loch Mir Golf and Country Club. If you are interested, you should RSVP by November thirtieth by calling six oh three two eight six four seven eight one or emailing info@tilltonnorthfield.com. The other is an open house at the Twin Rivers Food Pantry on Central Street in Franklin, which is taking place on December seventh from two to four PM. Just so that anyone who's interested in seeing their operation and what's going on, two to four PM on December seventh, the open house for Twin Rivers Food Pantry. A reminder, which I will repeat more than once this evening, is the parking restrictions are up for winter. So there's no parking on any street, ten PM to six AM, November fifteenth to April fifteenth. Slickman Justin was gonna bring this right up in front of the camera, but.
Here we go.
So there we go.
And police are out.
Yes.
No, they're not, they're off here.
Nope. Ten PM, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay.
Not on prospect. Not on prospect.
We told you.
I'll remind people of that announcement later. Do you want to do a couple of selectmen's?
I'm all for that.
Prior to.
Yes.
Fill our time? So everyone else okay with starting the selectmen's reports? Selectman Constantine? Six.
Wow.
I have a letter from the Winniscon Youth Soft, Adult, Youth Softball. And I believe this is from Julie Petty, the president. So to the Tilton selectmen, I am writing on behalf of the Winniscon Youth Softball League of eighty girls, age fourteen, from the towns of Northfield, Semetown, and Tilton participate in our league each year. We play a combined schedule of in-house games as well as interleague play with neighboring communities. We are affiliated with the USA Softball and our nonprofit 501(c)(3). Our organization is working on getting grants, sponsorship, and donations to build our own softball field. The town of Northfield has granted us usage of Saret Park to build the field, but it will cost approximately two hundred thousand dollars to build and then have associated costs each year to maintain. We are asking the town to grant permission for our organization to run a fill the helmet drive on Main Street, similar to a firefighter fill the boot, but tailored to softball. The purpose of this is twofold. One, mainly being to get funds for the league. And two, to bring focus to our goal. Surprisingly, there are a lot of community members that don't even realize that we have a recreation softball league. The first date we would be looking for is December third, and we would pick up a date in the spring to do this again. Our exact times will be nailed down by those able to participate, but we were hoping to do this from nine AM to one PM. All children will be accompanied by an adult, safety vests will be worn, and younger players would be waiting on the sidewalk. We, as a league, would take the safety of the children into the highest consideration. We appreciate your time and consideration for this event. If you have any questions, please email us at winnieyouthsoftball@gmail.com or call Julie at, I forwarded you all this email as well, another announcer telephone number. Sincerely, Julie Petty, President, Winniscon Youth Softball League. Oh, what do you mean?
I don't even know if they need a permit, do they? Really? I mean, I can go out there and panhandle money.
And they're asking permission because it's what firemen do once a year, right?
No, they haven't done it for a while.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we allow the Youth Softball League to collect monies on our street with December third, did you say?
Third, the day of.
On December third and on the date to be determined later. In the spring, well, that's later.
I'll second.
Motion and second, discussion.
Give me.
Item discussion.
I did too. I guess my one concern is that day, we're already gonna be closing down Main Street in the evening for the parade, the Christmas parade. So do that, but I guess I'd like to know what they're gonna do for safety because if you're putting kids on a state road, I have concerns about that. Liability wise, are we liable if a kid gets hit because we gave them permission? I mean, that's, I love the idea, but I'm just worried about liability and.
We're not giving them permission to go on the state road to do this.
It's Main Street, that's a state road.
That's right, and the sidewalks belong to us.
Yeah, they want to be.
They want to be on the street, like the boot, like the firemen.
What, like march in the parade with a helmet?
No, they want to be sort of the way that in the past, especially, I remember pre-COVID, when the, you know, the firemen, the boot at one end and the boot at the other. You could stop it.
Can't stop the traffic.
So my understanding is it will be an adult and a.
Player.
Player.
And safety net, safety vest.
Safety vest, correct.
But they're gonna be standing on the yellow line.
Yep.
Probably around that circle, that would be my guess.
So do you? Well, boy, that's even.
Nobody has ever been run over at a parade.
This isn't during the parade, Joe, this is from nine AM to one PM.
Nine AM to one PM.
Not in the street. I misunderstood. I would draw my motion. I would give them permission to stand on the sidewalks.
But if the adult did.
Not standing in the road, I won't sanction that. They're a bad idea.
John?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can give permission for somebody to obstruct a state road or it's advisable to sidewalks, things like that. Something that we might want to, we can ask our town attorney. No, but I'm just saying.
To the firemen.
We don't.
To do it.
I think the firemen actually switched over to the outlets. Last time I saw them, recall them doing it, it was a few years ago and it was at the outlets. They did it at the outlets.
They never, we've been asked for permission, in my experience.
It's been years and years and years on Main Street, years on Main Street.
They haven't done it for you.
I just, I don't think.
COVID, they haven't done it, but it's always been.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think it's a good idea for us to give permission. I think we have to find out who is proper to get the permission from.
I agree.
I agree, I think.
It's just, it's just like a parade, we can't have a parade without getting a permit through the state, so.
Yeah.
I sent the email to you, Jimmy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they need to find out what it would take for a permit to just be on the state.
For the state.
Yeah. I think the fundraiser's a great idea.
Yeah.
Knowing that without a doubt.
Yeah.
Town meeting, things like that, I could, they stand there.
Yes.
Stuff like that.
Okay. All right, we'll pass that along. So the other thing that I have is the senior center, there's a breakfast with Santa on December tenth, nine to twelve. It's ten dollars, children ten and under a five dollars. And Santa will be there from nine to twelve.
What was the date again, past?
December tenth. Would you like to sit on Santa's lap?
I'll be sitting. Oh, I'm going, you know I will. The Santa is nine to twelve, is the breakfast nine to twelve?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Joe wants a new lawnmower for Christmas.
I just got that one. Or a fire extinguisher.
Or a fire extinguisher, correct.
Sorry, Joe.
He's ignoring you.
No, he's putting it into his calendar.
I'm putting it into my calendar so I don't forget.
Yeah.
And I want to go. I'm the pancake guy.
John said you wanted a.
A new lawnmower for Christmas.
You're gonna ask.
I said you wanted a fire extinguisher.
Well, either way, I could have gone either way. If I had a fire extinguisher, I would still have a track.
That's it for me.
Got a few minutes, so I will delve into mine. As I already mentioned, winter parking ban is now in effect, November fifteenth to April fifteenth, ten PM to six AM, no parking on any streets. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense, Mr. Scanlon.
What are those dates again?
That is November fifteenth to April fifteenth, times are ten PM to six AM.
Okay, all right, thanks.
We had an economic development roundtable this morning with four business owners slash property owners. It was, it was a very, very good discussion to be able to hear from some of the folks that ranged all business near Riverfront Park, all the way up to Onions here in the inn. They gave us some very, very good feedback, some of their ideas, which, and we articulated to them sort of, you know, what the economic development, what we're seeing. And so what we've, what we asked them to do, and one of the things, the takeaways was, is to have them definitely spread the word about the fact that the Economic Development Committee meetings that meet once a month are open. We'd love to hear from more business owners. And we really feel that the four who are here today can start to get the word out so that it can be a far more open, good discussion amongst everyone.
So it was a positive experience?
Yeah, I think it was, I would say it.
Very positive.
It was very, very positive, it was great to have those folks here. You know, it's, you can see the investment in the town. That leads me to one of the pieces that I'd like to talk about that I had actually been thinking about and talking about as, I even had a conversation with, I even had a conversation with Bill Lawrence of Lawrence Hardware over a month and a half, two months ago when I went to see him. But it then spread into, I won't give you too long with this, at the elections, I had, was able to spend some time with Paul Rushlow. And he actually gave me a little bit more information. I like, I think the select board should, I think the select board should strongly consider thinking about a plan for removal of the trees on the north side of Main Street to open up, to open up the fronts of the businesses to make, also to make maintenance. Now, that would also need where we want to have something that's beautification in terms of replacement with flower barrels or something like that. Paul Rushlow. Paul Rushlow's concern is the root system underneath, that would actually start pushing up on the sidewalk, which would cause damage, which would cause more repairs and more cost in the future. So he said that there's a significant chance that as those trees start to get larger, you're going to start to see that happen, so.
Can I tell you how many businesses on this side have expressed that they block their signage, everything?
So you're, you're thinking replacing the trees with barrels of flowers?
Well, we would, yeah.
Yeah. Short term and then maybe lamp posts?
Yes. The same lamp post, only they would be just a little shorter so they don't hit that. You know, the electric, the utility lines.
Good plan.
At some point in the future, the goal would be to get rid of the utility lines, but that's a.
Yeah, yeah, Bob Cormier and I started that 10 years ago.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, as I, as I've used the example here, but also the Economic Development Committee, I think, for those of us who've been down Main Street of Laconia in the last, you know, five months. They removed a significant number of trees to open up the fronts of their businesses. You know, they, they, they cemented over, they cemented over, and they put out the flower planters, so it opened up the fronts of the businesses, which. Bill and I, when we were sitting, when we were standing on his porch, were looking across the street, and the trees there, at that point in time, it was summer, so the leaves were there. You couldn't even see the sign for die-ins, so anyone driving by is going to be hindered in terms of seeing what those businesses are and where they are, so. I think with the board's approval, I think we should put together a plan to start removing those trees, so.
That would be a springtime project.
Yeah, I think it's.
So we have time, but yeah, I'd love to talk about that, that's great.
So just for clarification, are we still talking about it?
You want to move? You want to get them out of there right now? Okay.
Well, you know, Kevin is busy, he's short handed, so I don't know that he'll be able to do that before, you know.
What's the best time of the year to do that?
I think they're coming out, I don't think they're, it's really, it's really a conversation with him, let's get a look at his schedule. But my, I guess my point is, is what I want to hear is, is the decision is, we're going to take them out.
The decision is.
Yes, my only thing is that we'll put something else, like the lamp posts or anything in there.
The goal would be to eventually, because every one of those places are electrified, to put a lamp post there with the hangers that you can do flowers. And that's the plant life.
The Main Street Committee had a tentative plan to put lamp posts in those places. So yay, I'm glad to.
If we can commit, commit ourselves to saying, yes, take them out, we also can commit ourselves to say, yes, we're going to replace it with, in saving enough money to put the lamp posts in.
Yes.
I agree.
We need a motion on that?
Please, just so I.
Oh, yes, let's clarify.
So I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan of the removals of the trees on Main Street. With the conso that we will have a replacement plan for lamp posts, and in between, we'll have flower planters just to keep the aesthetic beauty of Main Street going.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please, in the kit, by saying hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, and I got it done for six. So our next.
Look at all these people.
I know.
I wish you though, but see how many faces we have in the audience.
Our next order of business is the swearing in ceremony for our new sergeant, Mike Foster. With Mr. Scanlon's up on the swearing. Get up, get out.
Hello, where are we going?
I'm gonna go sit.
All right.
Yes, and you're gonna be by the flag, garden country, you know.
So, Michael G. Foster. To the inhabitants of the town of Tilton, in the county of Belknap, in the state of New Hampshire. Whereas there is a vacancy in the position for a full-time patrol sergeant in the town of Tilton. And whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties of said office. Two, we hereby appoint you, Michael G. Foster, to the position of full-time patrol sergeant at the town of Tilton, New Hampshire, which shall be effective as of November 21st, 2022. And whereas, upon your taking the oath of office and having this appointment and certificate of said oath of office recorded by Tilton Town Clerk, you shall have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liability of such office until another person shall be chosen and qualified in your stead. Raise your hand. Key up for me. I, Michael G. Foster, solemnly swear.
I, Michael G. Foster, solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent on me.
To perform all the duties incumbent on me.
As a full-time patrol sergeant at the town of Tilton, New Hampshire.
As a full-time patrol sergeant at the town of Tilton, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And agreeably to the rules and regulations of the United States Constitution.
And agreeably to the rules and regulations of the United States Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Congratulations.
Outstanding.
And then the town clerk.
Outstanding. Yeah, 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 yeah. Didn't I sign that, Joe?
It's the 17th, right?
Yes, it is. No, I didn't get that either. Oh, yeah, 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 sure hustle. What is it, what specifically do you?
Five, we need five, five pre-lit trees. Because I was double checking how many I need.
We have electric, but they would be. They don't have to be done yet. They just go with a lamp post. It's going to log with the tree truck when it is. There's electric in five places for the lamp post, but they won't be here before Christmas. Princess drink, when they make princess drinks, you know, you know.
Wolfers.
I had a good Instagram.
I had a few of those.
Did it work? Yeah, but like, like, there's no screenshot. Screenshot. No. Hey, I got my dad's house. I love my, my dad works out. Oh, yeah, I didn't know that. Back with. My dad has a picture of his office. Steve Goddard, Steve Walker. Oh, that's cool. So, that's good. Yeah. He still has a camera. Yeah, I like.
You know, and I use my computer probably just as much to do remote desktop. You know, where I log into.
But I can't, I can't do remote desktop with, for, for various.
But you can get in through the.
Well, I'm not, I'm just going through. Like some offices. And I'm going. So I gotta put my passport in. Pass, pass code every time I put it in. Oh, buddy, guys, six levels. Wow.
Oh, it's fun.
How's it going?
Good.
Already dead.
So, I think we go wrong. It's sealed, there was nothing in it. That's just not fair. No, I have, no, there's still plenty more. I have more information from the chief about. Well, I, I text him. No.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, we'll see you soon.
We look forward to you in the uniform.
See you guys next week.
Yeah.
Tomorrow. We're not invited. They're limited. Well, I don't know, I already asked.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's going on for ages. What's going on, vacations? Policies that we made, COVID, we made travel policies. I was just showing you this. Until. Rising back up. Some say, you know, you go away on vacation.
First name.
We got, we got a panel in public, so.
Yes, that's what it says right here.
Easily.
Okay, so we will take a selectman's report from, selectman Jessman.
The only thing that I had is, we have a budget meeting for the Lockmere Village District, which is the water company up in the Lockmere area, soon to send our budget to the Budget Committee for consideration. And everything else in my world has been bathroom renovations and new shats gone, so. Which is not a town thing and not officially reporting, but there you go. And that is my whole report, so.
Mr. Pyra?
I don't really want to do it, but.
Thank you. So, I have, I started a Facebook page for the Tilton Economic Development Committee. Couldn't think of the words. So, it's in its infancy, so it's not public yet, but it will be shortly. But while I was doing that, and searching around other economic development committee Facebook pages and things like that, I got the idea that maybe we should do one just for the Island Bridge. So I would be willing to start that. As always, with any page that I create, eventually Tim will be the head person of it, just for editing purposes, so that in the event of something happening, I can't block you guys out of it and start saying bad things or something like that. So I just was looking for permission to do that page.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
You're different, okay. And the Tilton Northwood Fire District had their special meeting on Saturday, and the amendment was voted down, so now we wait to see what the next step is. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pyra. Mr. Scanlon?
I don't really have too much, I'm not, um, I, to realize seniors, helping seniors went through, is that last week? Some people mentioned to me, one individual, and that's who they can thank for. They want to send a card or something for it, but I think that's a great program where the Tilton School seniors.
It is, yes.
And they go and help some of the seniors get their yards cleaned up, ready for the snow to cover.
I, I think Mr. Scanlon guidance, if they'd like to just send a general thank you note to Tilton School, it'll get distributed. It'll be shared with the students. Yeah, Julie, yeah.
I can send you the person's name.
Okay, the other thing was, I, I think everybody got a copy of the hazard mitigation plan. Although it's not specifically required to have a.
Excuse me, one second. Folks, folks, if you could just, while we finish up our work before the session, if you could just be quiet, please. Thank you.
Okay, so we all received the thing for the hazard mitigation plan. And I think everybody got a chance to review it and take a look, clues through it some. Although it's not absolutely required to have a public hearing on it. I know, I think in the previous year or two years ago, we did have some type of public input. So it would be nice to give the opportunity for the public on anything that they might see out in the community, or that could be a hazard that needs to be mitigated. I don't know how the board felt or how we go with that.
So is it your thought, John, that we would have a public hearing by the public? We could put the hazard, the draft up on the website and put a publication, a notice that we're going to have a public hearing. Take a look at the hazard mitigation plan, the draft, if you have any comments or concerns, come to the public hearing. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I think we had forms too, if they can't make it.
Okay.
On the previous ones or forms, a couple people filled them out. If they saw anything, I'm not sure, because I'm not involved in that hazard committee, so.
Right.
I don't know how that would all work, but leave it up to the committee to figure out a good way to get some public input, in case there was anything that they have concerns with.
So I did talk with Lakes Region Planning Commission, who worked with the committee to create this update, and we would want to have it done before the end of the year, so it would need to be the December, you know, first or the third meeting, so that they have time to make the changes and everything by the time we need to. So if that's what the board would like to do, I can look at the calendar and schedule for one of those two times in December.
Yes.
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 Thanks. Thanks.
And I think that's enough. Something happened.
Welcome back from Arizona.
Yeah. Thanks.
But it's, so we will now enter into non-public session. The time being. The time being six twenty-two, I make a motion to enter into non-public session per RSA ninety-one A three-two A. The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee for the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected one has a right to a public meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. And RSA ninety-one A three-two C. Matters which are discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board, unless said person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty or poverty of the applicant. And ninety-one A three-two L. Consideration of any legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present. Roll call vote?
Second.
Second. Roll call vote?
Constantino, yes.
Jessman, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Pyra, yes.
And Scanlon, yes.
We're now in non-public session.
This conference will now be recorded.
Little spear filled in, into that pen holder. Take my house, I have like thirty of them.
I make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I know, I'm well aware. Is there any new business this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
I was just going to say, we're going to be planting bulbs tomorrow. Walmart employees and Tilton School United students. And John on his own.
And me on the weekend.
So, as I was saying, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Whenever I go to a meeting, I know you.
Oh, look at Scott.
He grabbed a claw, you did.
Just throwing them in here, make sure I have one.
Looks like every morning, I go get one of these at the toll booth. So they always put a straw, and then I get a diet coke or something at work, I gotta get a straw.
We don't put it in.
But I put two straws, so I have.
I think I want a beer and a sub. Eric, are you up for dinner?
What?
You up for food?
What?
Huh?
Yep. Like the guy in Storage Ward says, yep.
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 Is Tim still down?
He, he left when I first went downstairs.
There you go.
And.